Good evening. My name is Brian Hagerty. I am the Chair of the El Paso Community College Board of Trustees. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. I have to read this about if anyone would like to join this meeting through the Internet, you could go to www.youtube.com/user/goepcc. So, could everyone please stand and we do the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
And before we get started, we've got some bad news this week that we lost one of our fellow trustees, Ms. Gracie Quintanilla. She was a great advocate for students and for this college. So if everyone would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. Call the rule, please Bill.
Mr. Uxer.
Here.
Mrs. Robles.
Here.
Ms. Nahera.
Here.
Dr. Graham.
Here.
Mrs. Moy.
Here.
Mr. Mendez.
Here.
Mr. Hagerty.
Here.
Okay.
Item 1.4, Approval of Minutes. This includes March 26, 2025, regular Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes, April 30, 2025, regular Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes, and May 28, 2025, regular Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the questions, Bill.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 1.5, Welcome to guests and staff members. Item 1.6, Open Forum There Is None. Section 1.7, Presentations by Individuals, Groups, and Organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. William Serrata, College President, Will Recognize Individuals Who Have Retired from El Paso Community College.
Chair Hagerty, members of the Board, first, I'm hopeful that you noticed our new podium, which is beautiful. Yes, thank you, Ms. Fernandez, you and your team, great job with that. These are always bittersweet moments. They're sweet on behalf of the employee and the recognition of the employee's outstanding achievements and all they've contributed to the institution, and they're bitter in that we're saying goodbye, until we meet again. I'm going to start with Professor Adriana D. Garcia. Ms. Adriana D. Garcia graduated from El Paso Community College with an Associate of Applied Science Degree Imperative Professional for the Hearing Impaired Program in May 1990. Soon after, in August 1990, she started working at EPCC as a Sign Language Interpreter at the Center for Students with Disabilities and remained there for 18 years. Working at the CSD was rewarding for her because she was able to meet many students who had more than one disability, and they had major challenges throughout their academic years. As a CSD staff member, Ms. Garcia was able to apply herself by learning how to do every task required by the department. Not only did she interpret in the classroom, she also tutored math, English, reading, and other subjects to the deaf students of the college. Working at the CSD made her become humbler and more grounded by seeing the students' potential to succeed because of their can-do attitude. Because of these students, she was able to continue her education and set goals for her future. In 1991, Ms. Garcia received her State Level 1 Certification from the Board for Evaluation of Interpreters as a Sign Language Interpreter. In April 2007, she completed her Master's of Counseling, Mental Health Counseling, from the University of Phoenix. A position as a Sign Language Instructor opened in September 2008 at the college, and she was hired as a tenure-track, full-time instructor for the Sign Language Program. She has always been an active participant in the discipline, creating ideas for the students to learn American Sign Language, ASL. She says that her element is in the classroom and that in that place, she is in a different dimension, providing instructional activities for students. After 35 years of service, Ms. Garcia will be retiring on the 31st of this month. There were many reasons for her to decide that it was time to retire, but the most important was to take care of her health. It was a difficult decision, but she has other goals in mind. One of her plans is to volunteer for hospice and be there for deaf people and their families. She also wants to be there for the hearing impaired who have no family. Her passion and the calling gets stronger as each day passes. Ms. Garcia shared that she has been fortunate to work at EPCC. The college and personnel have been good to her. She wants to thank the many people she has worked with who guided her, mentored her, and most of all, believed in her. She will always be grateful and says that she is thankful from the bottom of her heart. Thank you for your 35 years of service, Professor Garcia. We wish you the best in your retirement journey.
Since 1978, Ms. Peralas has been a librarian at El Paso Community College.
During her long tenure at EPCC, she has served as a librarian at both the Rio Grande and Trans Mountain Libraries. While at Rio Grande, she served as Head Librarian and was instrumental in the planning and relocation of the Rio Grande Library to its present location. For many years, she was the Nursing and Allied Health Liaison, serving 12 different health programs. Her rapport with students, coworkers, and campus-wide faculty has earned her respect and her reputation as a person who provides the necessary help needed to accomplish any task or assignment. Over the past four decades, Ms. Peralas has never slowed down and has readily volunteered to take on library, campus, and district-wide committee tasks. She also volunteered and served for five years to be the first advisor and mentor for a newly-created student club called College for Christ, which brought students together from multiple campuses. Ms. Peralas truly embodies what a librarian should be and will soon step away from an illustrious 47 years of service to the college, having impacted countless numbers of students. Her many years of classroom instruction and one-on-one help to students undoubtedly had a profound positive impact on their academic success. Her generosity with her time, her talents, and her willingness to help and do for others has directly impacted peers and coworkers. Ms. Peralas has been married to her husband Art for 42 years, and they have two sons, one of whom is a lieutenant in the New Mexico State Police Department, and one is a tenured kinesiology associate professor here at EPCC, Jeremy Peralas. Two daughter-in-laws and two precious grandsons. Dr. Smith, Vice President of Instruction and Education, states, "I have known Becky for over 35 years, and she exemplifies what EPCC wants from all our librarians. She is innovative, caring, and admired by all who know her. She will be greatly missed." Ms. Peralas, we wish you all the best in your retirement, and we thank you for your years of service. If you would join me at the podium, please.
Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Good afternoon, Trustees, Mr. President, Vice Presidents, Deans, guests in the room and guests all over the world. It's that time of year when we turn our attention to salary enhancements. Recently, the Dallas Cowboy Cheerleaders got a 400% pay increase.
If you dress like them, we can get you one too.
Are you going to give us a cheer?
After you, Chairman. Now, while none of us expect a 400% pay increase, a rather significant one would be very nice. After all, aren't the employees of the college, the classified staff, professional staff, the administrators, the faculty, aren't we vastly more important than cheerleaders?
You brought it up.
I did. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good afternoon, members of the Board and Dr. President, William Serrata. We're coming on behalf of the Student Orientation Department and as well, Student Government Association, and we are here because, if you noticed, on your tables, we left you some boxes, steel boxes with shirts, and also a formal invitation to our summer event that is happening. Its name is Steel Bash, and this is the third edition that we're doing this summer event, and this is for all students just to celebrate the first week of school. It's going to happen on Thursday, August 28, at 5:30 PM at the Valleverde Campus around the Americana Village. We're going to have free games, we're going to have food, live music, rides as well, we're going to have prizes for the students, so everything, so they can have a memorable experience for the first week of school. And of course, we would like you to be there just to experience the environment and the excitement of this event that is already in its third year, and we're expecting between 800 students to 1,000. Last year, we had over 500 students, so it's growing little by little, and hopefully this year is the biggest one yet. So again, you will find some shirts inside the box, the invitation, and also so you can share with your family members as well. All right? So we hope to see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the shirts.
Section 1.8, Communications. Item 1.8.1, Discussion and Review Regarding Data Statistics Policies and General Information Related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees.
Chair Hagerty and members of the Board, I'd ask Dean Tony Badio, our Dean of Dual Credit and Early College High School, to approach the podium, to present to the Board our incredible progress with our Dual Credit, Early College High School, and PTEC programs, all under the direction of Dean Badio and her colleagues. Dean Badio, please.
Thank you, Dr. Serrata. Good afternoon, Chair Hagerty, members of the Board. I love this presentation, by the way. I don't know if you've noticed, but I love what I do, and I want to acknowledge that I may be the face of Dual Credit Early College, but this is a team effort, my fellow deans, coordinators, there's a number of committees, so thank you. Thank you for allowing me to do this today. So first, a little bit about the students that we serve, the high school students that we serve. As you well know, we serve high school students in public, private, and public charter schools. We offer college courses for dual credit to them. We also have homeschool students who take dual credit with us. In fact, I was just looking at data today, and we have a 20% increase from last year. So we have more and more homeschool students coming to campus. As you know, we also have early college high schools and Pathways in Technologies Early College High Schools, or PTECs. In addition, we have some early college programs offered to dual-credit students for them to earn a post-secondary credential. At any point, if you have any questions, please let me know. I'd like to give you kind of like a perspective, right? 20 years. So back in 2004, a very small percentage, 4% of our student population, was high school students. 10 years later, right, we already had, we already had early college high schools, but still, dual credit was still a significant portion of our high school students. Today, or last fall, 36% of our enrollment was high school students, with early college high schools, of course, taking over the lead, and now, we can see also PTEC students. This last, I have to move because I have flowers right in front of me. So this spring, 39.44% of our student population was high school students. Again, we're very quickly, right, approaching that 40% mark. Dr. Serrata can attest that colleges across the state, although community colleges have 50% high school enrollment in some community colleges. So again, approaching the 40% mark, but something that I wanted to point out is that our students are incredibly successful. High school students are very successful. They complete, the course completion is 87%, compared to 72% of non-high school students. And Mr. Flores tells me that 71% are academically, educationally disadvantaged. And that is, as he has mentioned in the budget workshops, right, our funding now also, that impacts our state funding. So definitely, dual credit, great indicator of student success. So some of the things that we notice, right, in looking at the data, not only with us here at EPCC, but with our partners at UTEP, is that students have higher GPAs to students who take college courses in dual credit. Their graduation rate at EPCC, the three-year graduation rate, is twice as high than non-high school students. And our friends from UTEP tell us that the four-year graduation rate is three times higher if students had taken dual credit in high school. So again, great indicator of student success. And of course, great savings for the students and their families. El Paso Community College waives tuition and fees, and our partners provide textbooks and materials for them. 62% of our early college and high school and PTEC students have earned a post-secondary credential. We're approaching the 8,000 mark historically, right, to date, and even our non-early college and PTEC students have earned post-secondary credentials, 436 so far, and we're going to see an increase because my fellow deans have been working really hard at creating more Level 1 certificates that our partners are very interested in, not necessarily under early college and PTEC, but even for our traditional, let's say, dual-credit students. All right. A little bit about what we do to stay in touch with our partners. If you remember, Dr. Serrata used to report on the different events that we had throughout the year, but I figure maybe just once a year is enough for you to know all of the things that we do to collaborate with our partners. So definitely, we have a number of workshops during faculty development. We have two specific for our high school partners. We host a half a day in June, we call it the Dual Credit Summer Convening, and that is for newly-credential dual-credit faculty, just to get them ready to deliver our courses at the high school. And we also have the Dual Credit Forum, typically in the spring, again, an opportunity to bring our partners together. We also have something that we've been calling the Counseling Institute. Our counselors and advisors, and you see some of them there in that picture, they put together an agenda and invite all of the high school counselors for all the high schools in the region, and some high school administrators and district administrators join them as well. And this is an opportunity to give information to brand-new counselors and also to update some who are more seasoned. Again, we have this fall and spring. This October 24th, we're going to hold the 12th Annual Building Bridges Dual Credit Conference. Again, we bring all of our partners for the region, UTEP, Texas Tech, Region 19. Again, we have multiple breakout sessions for this conference. And finally, we have the Early College High School Leadership Council. We have partnership with eight school districts for our early colleges and PTECs, so we hold these meetings twice a year. This one is mostly for leadership at the district, the high schools, and of course, EPCC. So we're busy. We're always having something. There's always something for everyone. Now let me focus on early college and PTECs, and as you know, these schools are designated by the TEA, and they have to meet certain requirements, right? They are evaluated based on their access, achievement, and attainment outcome-based measures. When I created this slide, we hadn't heard from TEA, but we just heard from TEA about their designations, so I can share some of it. Some of it is confidential, but I can tell you that 10 of our schools were designated with distinction, which is they went above and beyond the metrics that TEA establishes for designation, so very, very proud of them. And now, I try to change graphics because I want to keep you interested. So this time, I'm grouping all the early colleges first in chronological order based on when the school was open. So of course, we always start with Mission Early College, our first early college high school, opened in 2006. We now have close to 1,500 graduates. Valleverde Early College High School, that opened the next year, getting close to 1,000 awards. Northwest Early College High School with Canatillo ISD, again, almost 775 graduates. I can tell you that these three early colleges were designated with distinction. Very proud of them. We also have Trans Mountain Early College High School that opened in 2008, Cotton Valley Early College opened in 2010, Clint Early College Academy that opened in 2012, and you can see there how many awards they have received since they opened. And Burgess Early College High School, our first school within a school, early college high school. Please notice in the upper right-hand side, we list the deans who are the administrative liaisons for these schools. So a lot of the work goes to them, and the praise goes to them for the great work that the schools are doing. Then we have Socorro Early College, Rams Early College High School, Trailblazers Early College High School. All of these schools opened in the same year, 2016, actually, no, Socorro Early College, 2015, Rams Early College, 2016, and the ones that opened the same year were Trailblazers, Isleta High School, Early College Academy, and Parkland in 2017. And a couple of years later, we had Falcon Early College and Empire Early College opening. Notice that all of these schools already have graduates. We have several of these schools that were designated with distinction as well. And then to close out the early college high schools, we have Pebble Hills Early College, opened in 2019, the next year, Tornier Early College High School, following year, I mean the same year, we have Hank's Early College High School, and Huesan Elizario College High School, who just graduated their first cohort this May. And then moving on to the PTECs. We only have two PTECs that have had graduating cohorts and have now gone past the provisional designation, and that is Clint High School, Early College, PTEC, and the YSD, PTEC, and proud to say they're both designated with distinction. We also have Fasman's PTEC, Coronado High School, PTEC, and these already have graduates. We have El Paso High School, PTEC, with EPISD, Franklin High School, PTEC, and Horizon High School, PTEC, Cyber Security. If I may share, students from Horizon PTEC, which is Cyber Security PTEC, have also worked under our STS program, Student Technology Services program, with some internships during the summer, last summer and this summer as well. Then we have the different, so altogether, EPISD has nine PTECs, right? And again, we have Jefferson PTEC, then with Clint, we have Mountain View PTEC, and we have Andrus, Austin, Bowie, Chapin, and Irvin PTECs. These schools will have their graduates in the coming years. They're still, and provisional. We have now additional PTECs that we have opened, some of them with SISD. Again, we have Synergy PTEC, Canatillo High School, PTEC, we have Empire, Falcon, Spartan, Blazer, and Bulldog PTECs, all with SISD that have opened, that opened last year. I would like to close just again thanking the many departments, the many teams that work together to make sure that the students, you know, are admitted, are tested, get registered. We have an instructional committee that works in different aspects of dual credit that's made up of faculty and staff. We have, of course, our dual-credit and early college high school counselors and advisors, and we're very glad that that particular team has grown in recent years to give better service to our high school students. We have numerous dual- We have numerous dual-credit instructional coordinators throughout the five campuses. We have, of course, our Office of Institution Accreditation to make sure that the college as a whole maintains accreditation with all of these off-campus sites. And of course, the many counselors and librarians at EPCC that assist. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No question. I just want to give you some kudos for being an incredible leader of the program. I know firsthand that you're always available or you make yourself available to all these campuses that need any sort of support or assistance. So I want to thank you for your leadership and to all the dual-credit team. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moyer.
Great job.
All right. Thank you very much.
Section 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Items 1.9.1 and 1.9.3 will be discussed after executive session. Item 1.9.2, Discussion and Action Regarding a Potential Initiative to Create a Veterans Museum in the El Paso Community.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to share with you, as many of you know, that the El Paso area is recognized as the veterans' capital of the USA. And that's throughout the county. And we claim to celebrate veterans every day. In this community, we are proud of the rich military history of our local heroes. So in our unyielding commitment to veterans who serve in all branches of the military in time of war and peace, a group of us, mostly they are veterans, and a lot of them are veterans from the Vietnam era, we are on a mission to establish a local shrine to honor the veterans' memories and the sacrifices that they made throughout, along the... along with their families throughout the wars that they have served under. So it is our vision to find a building that we would be able to showcase and share information to preserve and promote the heritage of their military accomplishments. We anticipate that their stories will have multiple angles of impact that will touch audiences, young and old, and at the same time contribute to the historical knowledge of El Paso County and highlight the contributions of those who served. So with that, in this effort, we are planning to secure resources and to try and find a place. We don't quite have that figured out where. But we are looking at possibly having one of those modular buildings. And we are thinking of possibly looking at EPCC, if it could be possible over there on your area, next to the monuments that we already have there for our military. So this is a consideration, and we are exploring that possibility. So I just wanted to share with you that information. So hopefully, it's going to become a reality. And a reality soon because we are losing a lot of our... especially our Vietnam heroes that they're getting a little bit up in age.
Yep. Chair. As a veteran, I fully endorse that. What I would like to see, including in the planning... I noticed this last week that if you drive downtown next to the county courthouse across the street, there's a plaque that honors all those people, all those veterans that died in Vietnam. I know that we have other monuments around here. I would like to see, or I would suggest that we include in this operation a recognition of those other monuments and recognitions of those soldiers. Before that, we have another one. There's honors that Buffalo Soldiers out at Fort Bliss. But when we do this, let's recognize all the veterans. Okay? And so, but it's an outstanding monument across the county courthouse. And I wish I knew one of some of the others. But I'd ask that you include all, the name of all the veterans, please.
I have been surprised at the names that have come up from some of the committee members that are doing the research. And it's very interesting. We have, you know, Medal of Honor recipients and some of the people that some of us didn't even know that...
And specifically, I think we should honor, then, as you mentioned that, Sergeant Ray Benavides.
Ray Benavides, yes.
Well, I don't know how many of you have visited the site, but right now, they're just finishing up the Persian Gulf, all the veterans that served in Persian Gulf Memorial. The site is mostly all done by donations from veteran associations all across the country. And I don't think the college has ever turned down a request. But I'm sure as long as they come with a plan that fit our... I just don't think we need to put any funds from the college. Most of the veterans bring up most of the money through raffles. I know there's a few bricks out there with Haggerty's names on them that we paid several hundred dollars for. So I know there's all kinds of things that they do for raising funds.
As a veteran, I think that's the best idea. I personally would not want an organizational support. I would want to see this individual dedication to the recognition.
Yeah. So I don't think there's a problem with that. We have, there's a lot of room still out there at the site. I don't know how many people have visited it. I recommend that you do. It's beautiful. That big old flag right up against the mountain. Right now, especially when the mountain is so green after all this rain. But I don't think we have a problem, Dr. Graham, I think.
And one of the things that we're exploring is there's a group that you apply for, and they donate the building. But we would have to do the foundation, and then they would donate the building. So we're exploring that possibility. Or if anybody in the audience has a building that you'd like to donate for this effort, we'd be more than happy to take it. I just think that it's, you know, the idea of having them, having it right next to that, the other monuments would be, you know, would be great.
And Dr. Graham, is this just the purpose of a memorial, a museum, intended for a meeting space?
No, it's not really for a meeting space. It's more like to showcase the different heroes that were from this community, that served from this community, and have a lot of pictures of a lot of the servicemen and women, and then a QR code so that we... the vision is that we would even create it to where they could take students during field trips and teach them about the different wars, like have several rooms, and each room represents one of the, one of the different wars that they fought. And also, some of the stories and artifacts. We also learned last night at a meeting that apparently they're going to be closing down the museum in Fort Bliss. So, you know, but these veterans are really interesting. They don't really want the museum or the inside Fort Bliss. They want it outside. They think it's too encumbrant to try and go in there. So there's a lot of very interesting discussions going on on this. But it's picking, you know, the momentum is really there now. So we're going to continue to pursue it. And if you know anybody that's willing to donate a few million dollars, we'll take them too.
Yeah. And if everybody remember back in the early seventies, the El Paso Community College practically was all for the GIs coming back from Vietnam. The GI Bill paid all their tuition. So we have a strong relationship with the military. And if you remember, I don't know, Mr. Smith, you might have been... No, you didn't come till nineteen eighty.
Mr. Flores.
Who's the oldest one?
Not oldest.
Oh. Remember that we had our first classes out at Fort Bliss at the old training site. They leased it to us for a dollar a year. So EPCC started basically because we had a lot of veterans coming back from Vietnam.
Logan Heights.
Some of us went to Logan Heights.
I didn't want to date ourselves, Dr. Graham.
Well, because you were busy fighting fires.
Yeah, well, but we have a strong relationship with the veterans, and I think it's a great idea. So thanks for bringing that up.
So I will give you a more formal report once we get... because we had to create a board, and we're looking to, you know, create a 501(c)(3) and formalize the name of it because we couldn't agree on the name last night. We had several names, but I think each one of us said a different name. So we never agreed on one, but we will. Takes a little while to get them all on the same page.
So, Dr. Graham, the item on the agenda says Discussion/Action Regarding a Potential Initiative. Would the action be just that we would process the discussion? I mean, continue the discussion further?
Continue the discussion further just because at this time, it was just presenting the idea of the possibility of having it in some of the EPCC facility, which would be out in the existing monument area in Flags Across America. So if the board is in agreement, we will... And again, seriously, if somebody was to offer a building or something because the commissioner had mentioned to me a long time ago that, yes, the county had buildings, but then when I pin him down, I didn't quite get one. So, but if we can come up with a building, that would be ideal. If not, at least we would have that as a backup plan.
Any other discussion?
So at the moment, we would have no action then until we bring it up later? Is that okay?
I think the action would just be that the board would endorse the idea of us working towards that together with no cost to the college, of course.
If we're going to endorse it, I would propose the next time we discuss it that we would have an overriding principle. Personally, if you go to various monuments, I think to say, well, we're going to have this, and we're going to do that, you know, you split the focus. And if this is the veterans... I come to mind the Vietnam War monument in Washington, D.C., and the visiting monuments. And there, it's an individual, personal thing. And I, you know, having a meeting hall is an interesting idea. But I think, I think that you start dividing your focus if you don't... I think the focus of the memorial is to recognize the individual and collective family sacrifices. And we really don't need to have a place where we can have a meeting for something else because they have an available room. I think it's the solidity of the Vietnam wall should be the primary focus of recognition of sacrifice.
And that wall is already there. Many of us visit it frequently.
And the wall that they have there in the northeast is the wall, just like in Washington, D.C., but it has all the names of the men and women that died from the El Paso County area. And all their names are on that wall when you go visit. It really is a neat site. If you haven't been there, you need to go.
And I think it's on Thursday when they have the food trucks. And, you know, and it's a good time to go and eat your dinner there and visit the monuments. Because the women veterans are also very active nowadays. They're coming up with all kinds of plans for that area as well. The only thing I complain about is that it doesn't really have, like... and I wish we had some kind of recognition that that is facility of the El Paso Community College. It doesn't say that anywhere. And we should have some kind of big sign that says, you know, that thanks to the El Paso Community College, all of those monuments are there.
Dr. Serrata.
Yes, sir.
Was any money left in the signage fund for building all these buildings we've got around here?
I have not looked at that account in quite some time. If there is not, we could transfer resources to accommodate that. And I'm sure that we can look at...
Dr. Graham wants to spend it.
Well, I'm sure we can look at signage that indicates that this is as a result of the college's donation of resources or donation of land that we have the flags across America.
Because it really shows that the college is, you know, very supportive of our military community. And the people that go there don't realize that that is part of the...
Part of the college.
Part of the college. When we have events, sometimes I ask for the microphone, and I remind them, but it shouldn't have to be...
You may not, you may not hear, see, or hear much, but I guarantee you, the veterans know. We may not talk about it, but we know.
Any other discussion? All right, go ahead.
Do we take no action on... No action. No action.
No action taken.
Thank you.
Section 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasurers Report. This includes June 30, 2025 financial statements. No action is required. Item 1.10.2, President's Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Good afternoon, Chair Haggerty, members of the board. I'm going to begin with Loretto Justice Fellowship National Program. It will be awarding four EPCC social work students identified by disciplined faculty with fellowship scholarships and paid internships for the Fall 2025 semester. The students must be enrolled in a social work internship course at EPCC and be placed at an approved social service agency. The Loretto Justice Fellowship may increase to ten students in the 26, 27 academic year. Thank you to our faculty, Mr. Christian Salas and Mr. Artura Costa, who were instrumental in establishing this great partnership benefiting our students. EPCC has been recognized as a key connector in the Borderplex 2030 Bridge Strategic Plan. The Bridge Plan is the region's strategic roadmap for long-term economic growth and global competitiveness. Developed by the Borderplex Alliance through a data-driven stakeholder-led process, the plan outlines a unified vision to strengthen the regional economy, support innovation, and adapt to changing policy and market dynamics. Special thanks to Dr. Christian Servin, who is one of the 21 members of the Strategic Plan Task Force that shaped the 2030 Bridge Plan. The report highlights EPCC as a key contributor, recognizing its designation as a National Center of Academic Excellence in Cybersecurity and featuring the Hack the Border project as a regional connector. We're proud to share that the You're a Good Man Charlie Brown production was a tremendous success, drawing nearly 400 community members and showcasing the incredible talents of our local faculty, staff, and students. The production brought together music faculty and emerging theater students in both acting and technical roles, highlighting the collaborative spirit of our Performing Arts Program. Special thanks to Mr. Ted Carber, Theater District-wide Coordinator, for his outstanding leadership in directing the production and coordinating the many moving parts that made the show possible. His dedication and vision helped create a memorable experience for performance and audience members alike. Congratulations to everyone involved on a fantastic production. The EPCC UTEP Transportation Research Immersion Program, our TRIP camp, took place at UTEP this summer from June 23rd through the 27th. During the week-long camp, EPCC and early college high school students participated in presentations and daily hands-on activities provided by UTEP engineering faculty. Students were introduced to transportation materials and design, followed by a tour of the UTEP Center for Transportation Infrastructure Systems Research Labs. Attendees observed various roadway material tests and concluded with students analyzing data from the testing samples. In addition, students explored the role of technology such as artificial intelligence, virtual reality, and machine learning as a catalyst for innovation in construction. Student teams were able to race the electric vehicle models against one another. Students also participated in a field trip to Tech Dot's headquarters. The field trip ended with a presentation about career and internship opportunities at Tech Dot. The TRIP camp concluded the week with a UTEP networking cookout between TRIP students, UTEP faculty, and graduate students. The TRIP camp is supported by a Department of Transportation grant in collaboration with the Southern Plains Transportation Center, Oklahoma University, UTEP, and El Paso Community College. Special thanks go out to Ms. Yvette Chukam, math professor at EPCC, Dr. Joanne Moyer, engineering professor at UTEP, for organizing and coordinating the camp. I'm pleased to report the successful completion of Dueling Chefs, a signature fundraising event presented by the Culinary Arts Department in collaboration with the EPCC Foundation. The event was held on Thursday, July 24th, at 13:09 and featured a friendly... The event was held on Thursday, July 24 at 13:09 and featured a friendly and spirited culinary competition between campus deans Chef Daniel Guerra and Chef Rick Webb. Guests were treated to a three-course dinner prepared and presented by the two chefs, each showcasing their distinctive culinary styles and creativity. The evening also included a well-attended social hour, kitchen tours, culinary tastings led by students, and live music, creating a vibrant and engaging atmosphere. This year's event held special significance as it marked the final public appearance, I would hope that there's more public appearances, of Dean Rick Webb before his retirement. Dean Webb has been a cornerstone of El Paso Community College's Culinary Arts Program since 2000, having served as, as both a chef and campus dean. He was joined in the kitchen by Dean Daniel Guerra, who began his journey at EPCC as a culinary arts student in 2001 under Webb's mentorship, later becoming an instructor and eventually department chair before his current role as dean. The collaboration between the two deans was particularly meaningful, reflecting over two decades of shared professional history and mutual respect. Eight culinary arts students played an integral role in the event, assisting with the preparation of the featured dishes, which included short ribs presented in both barbecue and cherry bourbon braised styles. The event was a great turnout, and all proceeds from ticket sales were directed to support student scholarship within the EPCC Culinary Arts Department. The EPCC Foundation coordinated ticketing and event logistics, ensuring a seamless experience for guests and maximizing the fundraising impact. It was a great event. Thank you chefs and slash deans for your, for the unique experience. Many thanks to our board who was able to attend as well. Partnership with the El Pasoans Fighting Hunger, the, the college successfully hosted a grocery pickup event on Wednesday, July 23 at the Mission del Paso campus. The event provided free groceries to students, faculty, staff, and local community members, continuing EPCC's commitment to addressing food insecurity and supporting the well-being of the region we serve. Thank you EPCC Campus Life and Student Leadership Volunteers, under the direction of Dr. Amaya, our VP for Student Enrollment Services, and the US Army's El Paso and Fort Bliss Zaragoza Recruiting Station for their dedicated efforts. Their collaborative spirit ensures, ensured smooth operations and a welcoming environment for all attendees. El Pasoans Fighting Hunger supplied enough food to serve about 150 to 200 individuals. The distribution included a wide range of items such as canned goods, fresh vegetables, fresh fruits, chips, garbanzo beans, and for the first time, baby formula in response to the growing demand among families with infants. The event marked the second partnership between EPCC and El Pasoans Fighting Hunger, following the initial event held in July of 2024 at the Valle Verde Campus. The Grocery Pickup is series is a part of a broader EPCC initiative to combat food insecurity, with plans for each campus to host at least one food distribution event per quarter. We remain deeply committed to meeting both the academic and basic needs of our students while fostering strong partnerships with community organizations to create lasting regional impact. Congratulations to the class of 2025. The 100th graduation ceremony of the EPCC Law Enforcement Training Academy was held on Monday, July 14 at the EPCC Auditorium. This event marks a significant milestone in the academy's longstanding history of training peace officers who serve and protect our community. The 2025 graduating class consisting of 17 dedicated individuals adopted the motto, "Service First, Integrity Always." As a part of this special celebration, Garrett Hiller earned valedictorian honors for academic excellence. Additionally, Adrian Diaz was recognized with the proficiency award. Ruben Flodish received the Law Enforcement Arts Award, and Isaac Rodriguez was honored with the Physical Fitness Award for his outstanding performance in this demanding program. The LIDA program continues to offer a rigorous six-month training curriculum totaling 736 contact hours. This training covers a comprehensive collection of over 42 independent topic areas, including defense tactics, firearms, and active shooter response. I would like to thank the instructors, program coordinators, and staff for being instrumental in our students' success. Congratulations to our graduates, Barry Bogle and his team. Chair Hagerty, that concludes my report. I'm happy to respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director.
Item 1.11 Consent Docket, there is none. Section 2 Administration. Item 2.1 BCA, BCB, BCE, CG, CGF, CHA, DIAB, EEC, FFDB, FLBC, TASB Local Policies for second reading and approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Number one, Dr. Serata, can, or, or, Mr., can we implement a policy of saying those letters as identified in the minutes rather than having to go through all that? Number one, I actually make that a question.
I just defer to Mr. Ortega, and he said, no problem.
Okay. And, and second of all, I don't know how many times we've been through this, but what we do is look at the individual. I wonder if Dr. Penley can give us the 35,000th view of where we are. I mean, if you look at the policy, man, you know, it's this big, and each one of those is a letter. So, you know, where are we, you know, like a 30,000th view of where we are in policies? And by the way, just a real rough estimate of how much asset that is your time is spent on this.
Dr. Penley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Uxser. In terms of the, the short answer is where are we with policies pending the approval of this action item? We are caught up with TASB updates for the time being. One of the advantages of the board's decision to convert our policies to, to the TASB system is we can be confident that we're now compliant with state and federal law and other statutes, which I personally could not have said in, in the past. And, and you all remember that this was a bit of a heavy load. It took about 18 months for you all to go through that conversion process, looking at annual policies.
Who went through it?
Well, you, you all approved the, the local policies.
I just want to emphasize that you were the one that did it.
Well, it was, it was cabinet. We, we went through each policy and, and made the recommendation where it would fit. Should it be deleted? Should it be kept in its current form? It, it was, it was a labor-intensive 18 months or so, but, but we did it. So at this point, we're in maintenance mode, and most of our policies are not undergoing regular maintenance until we have a legislative session. So I anticipate having a bit of a, of a pause in policy updates until November, December, when TASB will be providing updates to many of these that came out of the legislative session. To your point in terms of, of the size or the effort, you're absolutely right. We have a whole shelf in our bookcases in my area devoted to the hard copies, which we're required to maintain. Dr. Serata has a copy of all of the policies in his office. And in terms of your final question about resources, if I-
Essentially, what we're doing is that we paid you a bunch of money to sit there and read this stuff and, and then coordinate with the rest of it. However you do it, but it's 18 months, a significant amount of time, I guess, is what you want to say.
For, for the initial conversion, and at this point, if I had to put a stopwatch on it, I would say each policy probably takes an hour and a half to two hours from start to finish.
Then, then a real rough estimate, how many policies do we have if?
We have, I would guess we have close to 200 right now between the legal and the local.
I just, I think we just, we look at it individually, and I think we need, I just want to step back and say, hey, there's a bunch of stuff, and it's changing all the time. So where are we? And I'm good. Thank you.
Dr. Penley, you've done a wonderful job with the transition along with the team because it, it took a lot to move away from the old-fashioned style of policy creation and archiving to what we have now. It's, it's good. We're up to date.
And Dr. Graham is very happy.
Yes. And then every legislative session will give us some new ones. So we'll, we'll keep you busy.
Do we have a, a presidential policy that we have to get rid of? Two policies, February 1, we knew when we had.
We do have one policy that, that we will be presenting. My hope is that we will be presenting to you, and then that will be the final policy in the conversion. But the policies are yours to do with, your local policies are yours to do with as you see fit?
We have a second. Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 3 Personnel. Item 3.1 Information Items. Institutionally, externally funded full-time staff and faculty appointments, extensions, resignations, and retirements. No action is required. Item 3.2 Tenure Track Faculty Appointments and New Tenured Faculty.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 3.1 is no action required. Correct. Section 4 Financial Services. Item 4.1 Discussion and Action on the Approval of a One-Year District-Wide Support Agreement with Oracle America, Inc. in an Amount Not to Exceed $907,795.
Move to approve 5.1 and 4.4.
Second.
Item 4.4 Discussion and Action on, on a One-Year Software Maintenance Support Contract with Illution Higher Education for the Banner Enterprise Resource Planning ERP System in an Amount Not to Exceed $342,608.
Any discussion?
Yes. I, I, I know that we see Oracle and I see Banner, and I know that they are related. But I mean, we got a million, too, between two contracts, and how do these guys need each other? I mean, can you, can you tell us, how do they mesh? And why do we need both of them?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question. That's a great question. So the short answer is that Banner depends on the Oracle database platform. And while Banner is the college's ERP system that handles student records, HR, finance, the data lives in the Oracle database, and it depends on Oracle. And they, they work together. Obviously, they need each other. They work together technically, but they're two separate companies, and they require separate licensing and support.
Okay. Is there any other organization that actually covers both areas, both functions? Or are we really working, is the industry such that they're, they're segmented like that?
Unfortunately, we have to buy them separately. So we have to purchase the licensing from Banner for the ERP system and then from Oracle for the licenses of the database. And then also, I would like to take the opportunity to highlight also that in this agreement, we're taking advantage of removing a module that is no longer needed. Excuse me. It's a Web, WebLogic module that is no longer needed, and also reducing the number of licenses that we have been using. So we're making changes to the agreement, and this, in the period of three years, we will potentially see a savings of close to $800,000.
Any other questions? Call a question.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez. Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 4.2 Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Three-Year Contract with Dell Marketing LP for the Purchase of Desktop Computers, Computer Monitors, and Laptops for District-Wide Use in an Amount Not to Exceed $750,000 Annually.
Move to approve 4.2 and 4.9.
I have some questions.
Second.
Item 4.9 Discussion and Action on the Approval to Purchase from Dell Marketing LP a Storage Area Network SAN System in an Amount Not to Exceed $126,661.
Any questions?
Yes. Yes, I have some questions on 4.2. In the agenda, we are saying we are estimating a significant number of desktop computers. What is that significant number?
Thank you for your question. That's, that's a really good question. And the, the amount that we base it on is on previous purchases that have been done throughout the, throughout the fiscal year. And this abstract that is in front of you for your approval is so that departments can buy computers when they're, whenever they're needed. This is not the, for us that we're buying all the computers right now. It's just a vehicle for them to use this approval to be able to purchase computers. In the past years, we, we average in terms of computers purchases. It varies because sometimes we've done projects, like last year, we replaced over 2,000 desktop computers for the IT computer labs and other labs across the district. But for these that are just purchased by the departments, it just varies every, every year. And it also includes, it allows us to also buy the mobile, the laptops as well.
Okay. Just the, as, as needed makes me a little bit nervous. So do we have like a refresh plan or a phase-out plan? Or do you establish caps on each department of how much they are going to spend?
That's a great and excellent question, and I'm glad that you asked that as well because we do have a mechanism to address some of the concerns that you have. One of which is that we refurbish computers, those that have been replaced by a new computer, we, we take those other ones and we refurbish them. And whenever anyone creates a work request to work on their computers, one of the things that we do is we assess the computer for their, their performance and the condition that it's in. And if it's, if, if it's recommended to be replaced, we also offer that refurbished computer so that we, they can have some savings and not do a needed spending, right? Because all of these actually are the responsibility of every department budget head to assess and evaluate the need. But they're also welcome to create a request for us to go and assess their computers to see if there's a need for it. On top of that, we also have another mechanism, which is an approval process that we, in coordination with the purchasing department, all technical or technology purchases require IT approval. So we review those requests, and we only approve as, as needed, not as once. And on top of that, we also, I implemented a standardization of desktops and laptops so that it can help us with both pricing savings as well as streamlining support and responding quicker.
And that was my last question. So thank you.
So do I understand that as a computer tech, if I'm sitting there at the desk and all of a sudden I see in the local IT magazine that the latest whippy-dippy is out there, and mine happens to be about a year old. I mean, it's functional, it's good, but I really like the new stuff. Okay. Your procedure prevents me from, should prevent me from then saying, well, this computer is no good. I need a new one right now.
So the, the process that we have in place of standardizing computers will, will prohibit you from just customizing a computer with the latest and greatest, right? So-
But that's not what I wanted.
But that's what we, that's what we approve, and that's why we have that process. So we meet with the, with the end user, and we evaluate the needs that they have for their, for their roles. So for, so we have a different levels of specifications for our computers. So depending on the role, we specify a different computer. For instance, if they're doing engineering, architecture, or digital media, then we have a different computer specification and packet that we offer to them.
And organizationally, if I understand, or the organizational leadership, the department chair has skin in the game as to how often you replace what you have to replace.
So currently, that's what we have, and it is- So currently, that's what we have and it is, uh, the, the responsibility of the department budget head to evaluate that. So we don't have all of the purchases, uh, centralized through IT. But as I mentioned earlier, all those other mechanisms helps us in, uh, ensuring that we, we don't overspend unnecessarily.
And one last question then on four point nine. How does the storage area network fit into all of this?
So the storage area network is, um, it's our storage that we have in our, uh, data center that is used for, stored for different systems. So, uh, we have, um, applications that all the, um, the storage that data resides in there. So it's centralized so that we can, uh, then expand. It's modular. And we can, um, provision systems quicker as well because we, we also have our, our virtual servers and that are connected to our storage area network so that we can provide, and that, it helps us with reliability as well so that we can, um...
So the contracts are for, both of them are for Dell Marketing and so they know that they're on the line for both of them. So we use that as an opportunity to get them to negotiate.
And, um, I'm glad you brought that up too because we do have a good relationship with Dell and we're always, um, requesting and, and, um... Negotiating, I guess that's what I was looking for. We're always negotiating for discounts and, and this case, we always take this opportunity as well. Having that we, given that we are gonna have two different, uh, purchases with them, uh, they provide, uh, discounts for us.
Dr. Sartor.
Sure.
One picky point, if you don't mind. When we're preparing the agenda, it'd be neat if we had items four point one, four point two, four point three. Marco, 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 Marco. And then we go to Mr. Fernandez who has, I have a question for when it, but, you know, rather than, about to... Area concern.
Understood.
Any other discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item four point three, discussion and action on the approval to award contracts to ODP Business Solutions LLC and El Paso Office Products LLC for the district-wide purchase of office products in an amount not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars estimated annual aggregate amount.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Flores, I presume out of all this, when I see the word, uh, you know, six hundred and, and the word aggregate, it makes me, what kind of monitoring program? I mean, if it's aggregate and we're sort of have it there, you know? How do we monitor, make sure that, I mean, it doesn't, it seems like it's not specified so we can't track it. So how do we know that, you know, that, uh, we have good managerial financial control over all of this if we're, if an aggregate, so that the aggregate will say, yes, it's been used wisely?
Good question, Mr. Uxser. We have significant internal controls built into our ERP system. So our method of budgeting, uh, line item budgeting for the supplies pool in this particular example will not allow a requisition to go through if the funds are not available. It'll, uh, it'll show a flag of non-sufficient funds, which will cause the potential purchase to be questioned. In addition to that, our, uh, method of control for receiving, uh, goods and services for whatever the category is, but in particular, uh, we do not allow for delivery of goods and services except for to college premises. So nobody can divert purchases to their homes or another location. In this particular example, supplies, uh, our, our method of budgeting, uh, is a good example for the instructional area. We have five campuses, so there are redundant budgets, like we'll have English department at a different location, which will, uh, allow for closer scrutiny of budgets, uh, as opposed to aggregating all the supplies into one English budget. We'll have a separate English budget for different programs. Uh, we have about over six hundred budgets, which allow for closer scrutiny.
Just now, if we, if we deliver to the different locations, how can we, you know, w- once it comes to the campus, then how do we, what control we have when it brings in and you have fourteen boxes of paper, pencils, and, and toner and it goes into some extra office there and then anybody can, you know? From personal experience, somebody I happen to know, when they used to work as an engineer, actually accumulated bunches of extra pads of paper and other items so that they become the central warehouse for their particular work location as opposed to the secretary keeping it. I, I mean, how, what kind of control do we have to make sure that everybody doesn't have four or five extra copies of whatever they have there?
Well, that, that re- is dependent on the, on the budget head. The budget has to exercise control for those resources within the department. Where, where the supplies go is very specific to the vendor to deliver to a, a very specific room and person.
So appropriate uses a managerial function.
Yes, sir.
Interesting. That's a big number to have spread out everywhere.
It is.
Half a million dollars just, phew, in my locker, in your locker, fourteen desks.
We have, we have over six hundred budgets, separate budgets.
Any other questions? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
It'd be terrible if I started disagreeing with all this stuff, wouldn't it?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item four point five, discussion and action on the approval of contract awards for catering services for events district-wide in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars estimated aggregate amount.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item four point six, discussion and action on the approval of a three-year support services contract with Microsoft Corporation for enterprise support services in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Move to approve four point six and four point seven.
Second.
Item four point seven, discussion and action on the approval to award a three-year contract to Kara Soft Technology Corp. for a web-based software platform for planning and accreditation forms in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars for a three-year period.
Any discussion?
Yes. On four point six, I understand it's Microsoft, which is essentially a software function. Then we see five point seven is a software. Are, are there any coordinations? Is there any overlap? Is there any relationship between these two? Or they just, uh, need to be independent, trees, independently, separately? Why don't you ask Dr. Penley then? I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead and, and take this. Thank you for your question, uh, Mr. Uxser. So they are two separate, um, applications. So, um, the Microsoft that you see here, the abstract is for requests of support. It's not necessarily the licenses, licenses. Those you approved last, uh, last month, last board meeting. This is just for support so that we can get, uh, proactive, uh, support from them as well as, um, prioritize support. And it just helps us to maintain our systems, um, and operational. And it reduces also by having the support, it, it augments our staff. Uh, so it, it allows us to have whenever there's a, an issue that needs to be repaired or, or fixed for, um, a faster response time to address that issue.
So they're really not even comparable type or, uh, operations?
And no, sir, they're two different things, so...
Any other discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item four point eight, discussion and action on the approval to award a contract to American Data Bank LLC, a DISA healthcare company for drug screenings, motor vehicle record, MVR checks, background checks, and compliance logging services in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Move to approve. Four point eight and four point ten.
Second.
Item four point ten, discussion and action on the approval of a three-year contract with Century Link Communications LLC doing business as Lumen Technologies Group for district-wide enterprise telephone line services at each campus in an amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section five Physical Facilities, item five point one, discussion and action on the approval to award a contract to Medlock Commercial Contractors LLC to construct and install new elevators in buildings A, B, and C at the Valle Verde campus in an amount not to exceed five million, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. We, we talked about the elevators in, in a previous, and, um, I think, uh, one of the things that we want to look at was what was the usage or the need established? And I, I think the agreement was there, but we really didn't know if it was more of a, a, uh, medical compliance. I mean, what is the compliance issue or if it was an actual issue? What, where do we stand on the certification and justification for those?
So with regards, uh, I'll, I'll begin and I'll ask Mr. Flores to weigh in as well. With, with regards, Mr. Uxser, to, uh, the need. The need is, is absolutely there. We've had, unfortunately, where, um, the elevators are unfunctional. Um, we've had students as well as faculty and our staff, um, that were not, um, did not have the capacity to utilize the stairs, whether it be an ADA issue, uh, an injury, what have you. And so, um, the need is absolutely there with regards to increasing the capacity and, and providing additional elevators in those respective buildings. I'm pleased to say that, um, initial estimates ran as high as eight and a half million dollars for, for this renovation. Um, the elevators are, that are in those buildings are the original elevators. They are, um, a system that is no longer supported, um, by, uh, are no longer utilized in, in construction. So it's very difficult to fix the current elevators if and when they're out. Um, these would allow us to have additional elevators as, uh, support for those respective buildings. Uh, again, pleased to see that the, that the bid that the board will, um, go forward with for Medlock Commercial Contractors came in just over five million dollars. Um, it is a one-year, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty-day, uh, construction time period bit, which we anticipate will begin on the first of September. Um, so we feel very comfortable with the need, the justification, and the move forward on this. Um, a lot of kudos to Ruben Galardo and Mr. Flores on being able to move this forward, their teams. We first discussed the elevators, um, a couple of years ago. So it is good to be at this point where we're moving forward with construction. Uh, but these buildings were built in the mid-seventies. These buildings, uh, these are the original elevators that are in those respective buildings. So no doubt on the justification and need for them. Mr. Flores, please add to anything that I missed.
No, Dr. Sartor, that was quite a complete answer. Uh, in addition to that, we find that we, sometimes we need them to move freight. And so this plan will give us two elevators for building A, B, and C each. So we'll be able to segregate the freight part of moving things to different levels. Uh, and also, we have had incidents where people have been trapped in those elevators because of age and, um, ability to maintain them. So thi- this is a very important need in, in those buildings.
Any other discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item five point two, discussion and action on the approval of expenditures with various vendors to purchase building materials, supplies, and/or services as needed district-wide for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question. This is just sort of an anticipated usage. It's already existing planned budgetary item, I guess. Is that, and so it's just, it's now coming due that we need the stuff, supplies? Is that it?
It is.
It, it allows us, Mr. Uxser, um, to have these contracts in place in that if we have an emergency on one of our respective campuses or a need to move forward with any, um, repair, with any contract, that we're allowed to move that forward as opposed to waiting until the next board meeting as well to approve the contract, which then we'd have to do the RFP at that point, move forward, wait the period of time. It, it prevents the college from delays and being able to move forward. Between the last board meeting and now, we have dealt with water issues at the Northwest Campus. Uh, we have dealt with, um, a, a variety of issues at each of our respective campuses. Um, AC, uh, at, at the Rio Grande Campus. And the staff, um, in particular, the folks in the front, have been dealing with those respective issues and ensuring that the college can continue its functionality, continue to serve the students that we're fortunate to have enrolled at the institution without having to come to the board meeting every single time. Now, if it's an expenditure that is beyond any of these, we still come back to the board.
But we, but we've already approved the general, the general budget for the, this is just saying now it's time to spend it.
This is approving, this is correct. This is approving the budget that is in, uh, that is in place for this coming fiscal year. Okay.
Any other discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section six Curriculum and Instruction, item six point one, discussion and action on the approval of the restated and amended Burgess Early College High School inter-local agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Other question, Bill?
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item six point two, discussion and action on the approval of an amend, um, amendment to the cor- Cooperation Contract Agreement from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. This, I understand, is Mr. Smith, uh, President Smith, uh, excuse me, Dr. Smith. The, um, there's an original contract at three hundred thousand and this is third, this is just to, if I can read it correctly, it's called the Opportunity High School Diploma Program. How many, what, what's the student rate? What's the participation rate? I mean, what do we expect or want or have? I mean, so we're gonna spend thirty-three thousand dollars, but is anybody participating in this or...
Yeah, so for a little context, um, last year, we were awarded, uh, planning grant uh, in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. So faculty have been working along with, uh, five total schools, four other partners in the state to develop the program, uh, the competencies for the Opportunity High School Diploma Program. Uh, this year, they're developing the curriculum, so there is no participation at this point. We anticipate the first cohort to come in, in the spring.
And do you have a number?
Uh, we're hoping to get a cohort of twenty to twenty-five to, to start out.
It's not a one-zero, two-zero.
No, absolutely not. And we think there's considerable growth potential in our region. There, there are a lot of individuals that have, for whatever reason, dropped out of high school, uh, are in the workforce now but would benefit from coming back, completing their high school diploma, and earning a college degree as, or certificate as well.
How does this differ from a GTE?
So the GED is, yeah, uh, is one avenue for someone to show completion of high school. Um, some folks don't have a GED or a high school diploma, so the state felt, uh, that an opportunity to get a diploma might be better than a GED. We also have GED programs at the institution. And this is, uh, the state found another, uh, pot of money, so they've divided up, uh, that up amongst the five partners and our share is thirty-three thousand. And, uh, we'll be using that predominantly to, uh, market the program.
But this is, this is focused on getting a, a ticket puncher, if you will, out and so that it helps people get further their personal career.
That's absolutely correct. Not only for their high school diploma, but to earn a college credential at the same time.
Any other questions? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section seven, student services. Item seven point one, discussion and action on the approval of a contract with CW, CDW Government for a mass notification system in an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars for three years.
Move to approve seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, and seven point four.
Second.
Item seven point two, discussion and action on the approval to contract with Best Buy Business to purchase hardware and furniture required for the National Junior College Athletic Association, NJCAA, esports program in an amount not to exceed one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Item seven point three, discussion and action on the approval to purchase from Dell Marketing LP Computer Equipment and Furniture required for the National Junior College Athletic Association, NJCAA, esports program in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Item seven point four, discussion and action on the approval of continuing education tuition rates for new courses. Item seven point five, discussion and action on the approval of continuing education tuition rates for revised courses.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do. Seven point one, Dr. Amaya, discussion and approval of a contract for a mass notification, what do we have now? Don't we have a mass notification system now?
Yes, sir, this is it. This is the HANO Alert, the system that we currently use. It's just our re-upping the, the contract with this vendor.
Oh, okay, I guess I, I misread that, so this is just an extension of-
Yes, sir.
Our current procedures. Oh, okay, okay, I didn't. Okay.
Any other discussions? I'd just like to say, it's about time for the esports, I mean, I've only been waiting for two years.
I, I'd like to say thank you to our team for all the work they put into it to get it up and running, Judge.
Yeah. I, I would really like to thank you also. So it's great. Okay, no other discussion, call the question, Bill.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section eight, community services, there is none. Would the board like to go into executive session? Item one point three, executive and closed session. The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice, or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about secure, security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item one point three point one, discussion with legal counsel regarding negotiation of ground lease agreement with Canutio ISD regarding EPCC Northwest Campus pursuant to section five five one point zero seven two of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point two, discussion with legal counsel regarding EEOC charge filed by Michael Adam Mason, EEOC charge number four five three two zero two five zero zero six five nine pursuant to section five five one point zero seven four of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point three, discussion with legal counsel regarding recent amendments in the Texas Education Code to reflect compliance with the requirements of Texas Senate Bill thirty-seven, eightieth, eighty-eighth legislative RS, including statutory sections governing the establishment and function of faculty councils or senate. Texas Education Code five one point three five two two, five one point three five two three, five one point three five four one, five one point nine one three, five one point nine four three one pursuant to section five five four point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code. The time is now six oh eight, and the Board is in executive session.
Okay, the Board is now back out of executive session. Uh, Bill, can you, uh, read one point nine point one, please?
Yes, sir. Item one point nine point one, discussion and action to approve the ground lease agreement with Canutio ISD regarding EPCC Northwest Campus.[1730.66]